Let's go ahead and call this ready to order and we'll start with a pledge of allegiance and invocation by our city manager.
(inaudible) ...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, may everything we do begin with your inspirations so that all our decisions may be prosperous. Allow us to continue to work together and encourage each and other one of us for a better tomorrow. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Our proclamation in the National Service Recognition Day. Anna?
Mayor and Council, good afternoon. With us today, we have Ms. Paula Garcia, Mr. Jonathan Stevens, Erica Quintanilla, Mr. Juan Cedillo, and Mr. Alex Mead, who are part of this organization. The proclamation reads as follows: Where a service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs; and whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps addresses the most pressing challenges facing our cities and nation, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families, to preserving the environment and helping communities recover from national disasters; and whereas National Service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve; and whereas National Service participants serve in more than 70,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic neighborhood and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being; and whereas National Service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve with both through their direct service and by recruiting and managing millions of additional volunteers; whereas National Service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solution and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community, impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollar; whereas AmeriCorps members and Senior Corps volunteers demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors; whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shows a priority with local elected officials nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, the U.S. Conference of Mayors, the National Association of Counties, and elected officials across the country to recognize the impact of service on the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April 5th, 2016. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission do hereby proclaim April 5th, 2016, as National Service Recognition Day in Mission, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of National Service in our city, and thank those who serve, and find ways to give back to their communities. Proclaimed on this the 28th day of March, 2016.
So I do need a motion to accept the proclamation?
More to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve our proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
We do have another one. Do we have somebody from the...
Mayor, we do have Mr. Alex Mead and some of our representatives that can come up real quick and receive the proclamation.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I want to introduce to you Paula Garcia. She's the Executive Director of Teach for America, which is a component of AmeriCorps.
Yeah, so, thank you. Teach for America, we are proud to be part of the AmeriCorps program and are honored to be today in the City of Mission, who participates and values National Day of Service. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to take a quick picture here with the council.
Mr. Cedillo?
Mayor, Council, on behalf of the Hidalgo County Community Service Agency Retired Senior Volunteer Program, I want to thank you for supporting this proclamation. The City of Mission has over 68 volunteers participating in the Mission Hospital, First United Methodist Church, and El Monsias, the United Methodist Church. Thank you.
Thank you. You want to come up here?
(inaudible) (inaudible) Paula, you want to get over here? Yeah. (inaudible) Everybody look over here, and in three, two, one. One more. Alright, we got it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anna, your next proclamation is Fair Housing Month?
Yes, Mayor, Council, and with us today, we have Mr. Roel Rivera, Board Member, Ms. Yolanda Martinez, Board Member, and Mr. Jorge Martinez, Board Member, here to accept the proclamation, along with Mr. Juan Longoria, the Director. And the proclamation reads as follows: Whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development implemented the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, program in 1974, for the purpose of providing local governments with a financial resource to assist low and moderate income persons; whereas the City of Mission has utilized nonprofit organizations to address neighborhood and human needs, and has made a significant impact to our community through the funding of programs for youth and the elderly, housing assistance programs, economic development, and water sewer and drainage improvements; whereas the City of Mission and other local governments have clearly demonstrated the capacity to administer the CDBG program to identify, prioritize, and resolve passing local problems; whereas the City of Mission adheres to policies set forth in Title VIII of the Civil Rights Legislation, further known as the Federal Fair Housing Act, which recognizes, supports, and encourages the right of every person to live in the housing of the individual's choice; whereas said legislation was adopted in April of 1968 by President Lyndon B. Johnson prohibiting discrimination in housing practices based on race, color, national origin, age, religion, sex, familial status, and handicap disability. And now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission do hereby designate the month of April as Fair Housing Month, fair housing, it's your right, use it, and further, March 28th, April 2nd, 2016, as National Community Development Week, celebrating success in your community. Proclaimed on this the 28th day of March, 2016.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve our proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Longoria?
Thank you. With Ms. Carrillo mentioning is Yolanda Martinez, Roel Rivera, and Jorge Martinez. Just wanted to thank you and to let you all know that this week, we are celebrating CDBG Week, the start of it, and we have an open house there at across the street, 1301 East Eighth Street. Everybody's invited, the public as well. We're going to have refreshments all day from 9 to 4, every day, all this week.
Thank you all very much for everything.
Do want to thank you. This is my 15th year with the City of Mission.
Thank you all very much.
Let's take a quick picture. (inaudible)
(inaudible)
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
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 Anna, your next proclamation is Fair Housing Month?
Yes, Mayor, Council, and with us today, we have Mr. Roel Rivera, Board Member, Ms. Yolanda Martinez, Board Member, and Mr. Jorge Martinez, Board Member, here to accept the proclamation, along with Mr. Juan Longoria, the Director. And the proclamation reads as follows: Whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development implemented the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, program in 1974, for the purpose of providing local governments with a financial resource to assist low and moderate income persons; whereas the City of Mission has utilized nonprofit organizations to address neighborhood and human needs, and has made a significant impact to our community through the funding of programs for youth and the elderly, housing assistance programs, economic development, and water sewer and drainage improvements; whereas the City of Mission and other local governments have clearly demonstrated the capacity to administer the CDBG program to identify, prioritize, and resolve passing local problems; whereas the City of Mission adheres to policies set forth in Title VIII of the Civil Rights Legislation, further known as the Federal Fair Housing Act, which recognizes, supports, and encourages the right of every person to live in the housing of the individual's choice; whereas said legislation was adopted in April of 1968 by President Lyndon B. Johnson prohibiting discrimination in housing practices based on race, color, national origin, age, religion, sex, familial status, and handicap, disability. And now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission do hereby designate the month of April as Fair Housing Month, fair housing, it's your right, use it, and further, March 28th, April 2nd, 2016, as National Community Development Week, celebrating success in your community. Proclaimed on this the 28th day of March, 2016.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve our proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Longoria?
Thank you. With Ms. Carrillo mentioning is Yolanda Martinez, Roel Rivera, and Jorge Martinez. Just wanted to thank you and to let you all know that this week, we are celebrating CDBG Week, the start of it, and we have an open house there across the street, 1301 East Eighth Street. Everybody's invited, the public as well. We're going to have refreshments all day from 9 to 4, every day, all this week.
Thank you all very much for everything.
Do want to thank you. This is my 15th year with the City of Mission.
Thank you all very much.
Let's take a quick picture. (inaudible) (inaudible)
Okay.
On my heart.
(inaudible) Three, two, one. Do one more? Three, two, one. You got it?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Our next item is a report from our Chamber of Commerce.
Esteemed City Councils, just here, you should have the reports in front of you. I'm just going to go through each event, one by one. At Spark Events, we were on hand, at Sparks Events, to welcome them to the Chamber at their ceremonial ribbon cutting that took place on Monday, March 7th. There was a Buena start of this luncheon that we had. This quarter's luncheon was held at the Simaron Country Club, was well-attended and was sponsored by South Texas Health Systems. The keynote speaker was Lance Ames, interim CEO of McAllen Heart Hospital and South Texas Health Systems ER at West Lico and Mission. We have a couple of events coming up, well, actually, three events coming up in April. We have the Fit and Fresh ribbon cutting. We'll be hosting that at 200 North Bryan Street. This will take place next Friday, April 8th, at 10:30 a.m. We have the Arte Suave Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu ribbon cutting that will be on Monday, April 11th, at 5:30 p.m. We'll be welcoming them to the Chamber with a ribbon cutting that takes place at 2407 Brock Street in Mission. And then we have our All For the Kids Golf Tournament. That's our big event. We're gearing up for our second annual All For the Kids Golf Tournament, taking place on Friday, April 29th, at Simaron Country Club. The funds generated from the tournament will benefit Mission CISD's Back to School Badge that's taking place in August. This partnership between Mission CISD and the Chamber has enabled us to provide over 2,000 backpacks to the children of the Mission community. Teams and individual players are welcome and may register by calling the Chamber or visiting the website. We're also very close to wrapping up our CEO search within the next seven to 10 days. That's going well. We've had many interviews and went through a lot of resumes, but we're almost in the finish line. And is there any other questions that you guys have for me?
Thank you so much.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Department reports are in your packet. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask.
A move for approval, Mayor?
Second.
Yeah, motion and a second to approve the department reports as you're in your packet. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Sisters' participation, do we have anybody from the audience that would like to address the council? Not having anything with our agenda today. Okay. We'll go on to our public hearings, but before we do that, I'd like to go down to Item 422, and that is a donation that we're giving an ambulance to, donated an ambulance to Salinas Victoria, New Orleans. And they're here, and they need to leave.
Yes, sir. Mayor, good afternoon. City Council, good afternoon. And yes, Mayor, we do appreciate it because they do have to travel back to Mexico at the end of the meeting. This agenda item, Mayor, we're requesting the approval, the donation from Mr. Candel Antivetos from Med Care. You had submitted a letter a few weeks ago requesting an ambulance. We had received a lot of requests. I know Mr. Garcia received requests, and you received quite a few requests from our sister cities for different types of equipment. Based on the letter that was sent out, we did receive a letter back from Mr. Antivetos from Med Care that they were willing to donate an ambulance to us, and at this time, what we're requesting is to accept the donation, and in turn, turn around and donate it to one of our sister cities, which is Salinas Victoria. And Mayor, I know Salinas Victoria has a very soft heart, not only to you personally, and to our city, and to the Sister City Committee, because we've donated many, many things to them. We've built a school there. We helped colonize La Colonia Mission there in Salinas Victoria, so it has a soft heart. At this time, they're in dire need of an ambulance, so this would be an appropriate thing. So, we're requesting the authorization to accept the donation and to also donate it to Salinas Victoria.
Okay, we do need a motion to accept the donation from Med Care ambulance service?
Move for approval, Mayor. Second.
A motion and a second to approve the donation that we're getting from Med Care. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
And we also now need to, this donation that we are probably going to give, donate
it to Salinas Victoria, New Orleans. Somebody put here Tamaulipas, Mexico. I don't know why, but it's not in Tamaulipas. So, it's New Orleans.
And we do have here Pablo Penya, Mayor, which is a treasurer here on behalf of Gonzalo. I want to say a few words.
Buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes.
El nombre de Gonzalo Lizondo, el alcalde de Salinas Victoria, les manda un caluroso saludo a todos, y a la vez les agradece esta donación que tuvieron a bien dar al municipio de Salinas Victoria. Por motivos, hay personales, no pudo asistir él hoy, pero está dispuesto a venir cualquier día que, de la próxima semana a la hora que ustedes digan, y pues agradecerles las atenciones que siempre han tenido para allá con la gente de Salinas Victoria. Sabemos que siempre contamos con ustedes para, pues apoyos que haya en Salinas Victoria son muy bienvenidos y son muy necesarios. En nombre de la gente de Salinas Victoria, les agradecemos la donación que tuvieron con nosotros.
(inaudible)
Mayor, we'll do, Mr. Garcia and I, I will sit down with Mr. Antivetos because he could not be here also, but he does want to deliver it, hand-deliver it personally, the ambulance. It'll be ready for us next week. We'll get the title and the ambulance, and we'll have Mayor Gonzalo also receive it, and then we'll come back at the next meeting. We can do the formal turnover of the keys and the title so they can start the process to put it to work. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
We go on to our public hearings, and our first item is 1.1A. Mr. Tijrida?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for a conditional use permit, this is for four drive-through lanes for banking services for Texas Regional Bank located at 2300 East Griffin Parkway, Lot 1, Texas Regional Bank subdivision, or TRB subdivision. The current zoning is C3, and the applicant is Texas Regional Bank. This would require the adoption of an ordinance. If the council's inclined to approve it. On March 9th, 2016, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit. The subject site is located at the northeast corner of Griffin Parkway and Tanglewood Drive. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval for three years. However, staff is recommending approval for life of use, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. This matters now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, this is going to be for the live use. Need a motion to accept the recommendation and also accept ordinance 4332.
Move to approve?
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item C.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This is also a public hearing for a conditional use permit for a drive-through service window at Taquería El Infiernito, number 2, at 2310 East Expressway 83, Suite 8, Lot 3, Simaron Crossing subdivision. The current zoning is C3, and the applicant is Luis Valencia, and this would require the adoption of an ordinance if the council's inclined to approve it. On March 9th of 2016, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider the conditional use permit. The property is located approximately 250 feet west of Shea Road on the south side of US Expressway 83, within an existing commercial plaza. There was no public opposition during the Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission recommended approval for one year. However, staff and city manager are recommending approval for life of use because we've had several taquerías there already utilizing that window, and we believe if we have any problems, we could bring it back to you at that time. This is a public hearing. This matters now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, we are going to accept the recommendation and also adopt ordinance 4333.
So, move, Mayor?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the recommendation, and of course, our ordinance 4333. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council.
Item D.
This is also a public hearing. This is for a conditional use permit for a drive-through service window at Velas Burgers, located at 1500 West Griffin Parkway, being the west 180 feet of the east 440, of the south 100 feet of Lot 25-2, West Editionist Shea Land subdivision. Current zoning is C3, and the applicant is Gorditas Los Jarritos LLC. This would require the adoption of an ordinance if the council's inclined to approve it. On March 9th, 2016, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit. The property is located at the northwest corner of Wednesday and Griffin Parkway. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval for one year. Staff is also recommending approval for one year, as is our city manager, because this is a new location, and there is a residential street where the traffic will exit onto, and we want to see how that works. This is a public hearing. This matters now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, we will accept the recommendation and of course, ordinance 4334.
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation and also our ordinance 4334. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item E.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 1.1E is also a public hearing. This is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages, also at the same location, the same business, Velas Burgers, 1500 West Griffin Parkway, which is the west 180, of the east 440, of the south 100 feet out of Lot 25-2, West Editionist Shea Land subdivision. Current zoning is C3, and the applicant is Gorditas Los Jarritos LLC. This would require the adoption of an ordinance if the council's inclined to approve it. We did have a meeting before the Planning Commission on March 9th, 2016, to consider this conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Wednesday and Griffin Parkway. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval for one year. Staff is recommending approval for one year, subject to compliance with ordinance 4320 and number 2 waiver of the 300-foot separation requirement from residential neighborhoods, and this is a public hearing. This matter is now before you.
You're doing a waiver on what?
On the residences within the area.
You're waiving the...
It's something that's in the ordinance, Mayor, that the Planning Commission can recommend to the city council to do, and we've done it in the past.
Did they do it?
Yes, they...
They send out notices to everybody?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we did.
You did not waive that, no?
No, they...
You did not waive that?
No, no. We sent notices to everybody.
Can you put a picture of the restaurant? I mean, I'm concerned about getting the permit for selling tacos, and then now they want to sell beer.
You have the previous picture of the restaurant or the drive-through window? Well, that's the picture of the restaurant, Mayor. The interior of the restaurant, and the primary sale would be, of course, the food. More than 51% would be for food. This would just be for the sale of beer and wine with a meal. That's it, sir.
There are no schools or churches nearby next to them?
Not in the area, no, sir. There's a, I believe there's a daycare right next to it, but that is covered by this waiver, and...
What waiver are you talking about? Can you explain the waiver?
The waiver, Mayor, is something that's in the ordinance where the Planning Commission can recommend to the city council, waiver whenever there's residential within the 300 feet, and also there's like the daycare next to it, if they're not in objection to it. And, but the council's inclined to deny this if...
Came up with this idea, waiving the...
It's been in the ordinance book.
But I know, but who came up with the idea to do on this one?
It was a recommendation by the Planning Commission.
Oh.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a picture of the front of the business? Do we have a picture of it? Danny? I think I saw it earlier.
There's a side picture.
Do they used to serve beer and alcohol there?
If I recall, it's been a restaurant for over 10 years, I recall.
Did it have that permit or no?
Yes, that I recall.
1500 West Griffin Parkway.
And the daycare is not right next to it. It's across the street.
Okay, I apologize. Apologize for that.
No, there is one next to it.
I thought there was one right next to it.
They have a place to your parents. This one's across the street.
In the corner.
In the corner. Well, it's been a restaurant all the time, but you know, they have not been able to get it started. It's always gone belly up. You think the beer's going to make it go?
No, no, sir. Just processing the applicant's request for your consideration.
Well, I don't know. It's up to the council. Anybody in favor or against this request? Is anybody here that is close by there? Anybody in favor or against? If not, we're going to approve this restaurant there with beer. With, probably be the first one there on West Griffin Parkway. It's too close to the neighborhoods. It's right there.
Yes, sir, Mayor.
That's why you all waited a while.
It's a recommendation, Mayor. Yes, sir.
But who would the Planning and Zoning come up with the recommendation says, we're going to waive that? We're not going to let anybody know.
(inaudible) You're the owner?
Hello. My name's Raúl Vela, and I'm here on behalf of my brother Roberto. I am the manager, kitchen manager of the restaurant. And when we went to apply with TAVC, they told us that back in 2010 was the last time that they approved to them to sell beer. And we've been in business for three years, and we believe it's going to be good for our business. And like the gentleman said, it's not going to be anything like a club or nothing like that. It's just to be served with the food. So, would you please consider that? Really appreciate it. And like the gentleman said, it's not going to be anything like a club or nothing like that. It's just to be served with the food. So, please consider that. Really appreciate it.
Well, Mayor, it's kind of like the restaurants that we have on four ninety-five that are directly in front of a subdivision.
Yeah, but this is different. If you can see, those ones are nice subdivisions and they have all the setbacks. This one is right behind, you know, I'm just trying to tell you, it's mixed in with, it's too close to the homes, is what I'm trying to say. You know, I know Hardest was in front and then you had the subdivisions way back there, which is fine. And we didn't waive anything. We told everybody what we were going to have there.
No, even those conditional use permits are required to waive the three hundred foot separation because it's less than three hundred feet. So...
Excepting only we want to have the beer. I just hope that the neighborhood doesn't complain and then it's going to be too late. It's rather that we're going ahead and ask questions right now. And I can only just tell you my concern, she's just too close to the neighborhoods. But that's fine. The recommendation from Planning and Zoning is to waive the three hundred feet, I think, and to recommend to the council that we approve the permit for the sale of consumption of alcohol and that we adopt ordinance forty-three thirty-five. That is the recommendation from our noxious Planning and Zoning.
And it is for one year? Is that correct? Okay.
Move for approval, Mayor. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve a conditional use permit for the sale of alcohol at fifteen hundred West Griffin Parkway and to also adopt ordinance forty-three thirty-five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I will vote against this item. So, it's one vote against and three in favor and one is not here. F?
Item F, Mayor and Council, this is also a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at Villa del Mar Restaurant. This is two oh seven East Expressway eighty-three, Lot Three, El Pueblo Phase Two subdivision. The current zoning is C-three General Business District and the applicant is Vega Restaurants Incorporated. This would require the adoption of an ordinance. We did meet on March ninth, two thousand and sixteen, before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Notices were sent in accordance with our rules. The property is located within a plaza approximately six hundred feet east of Conway Avenue along the north side of the frontage road of the expressway. There was no public opposition. The board unanimously recommended approval for three years based on the fact that the restaurant's been there for several years now and that the primary sale is food and their hours of operation are Sunday through Thursday until nine PM and Friday and Saturday to eleven PM with the restaurant. Staff's recommendation is for approval for three years as well, subject to the waiver again of the three hundred foot separation requirement and compliance with ordinance forty-three twenty. This is a public hearing. This matters now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? This is all by voice. And also to adopt ordinance forty-three thirty-six.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the recommendation on this item, to the sale of alcohol beverages at Villa del Mar Restaurant, and also to adopt approved ordinance forty-three thirty-six. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
This position of the meetings, we have the city council meeting that we had on March the fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen. We do need to approve those minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We also have to acknowledge the minutes that we had for the different boards that we have. We have the Mission Ambulance Board we had on April the eighth of two thousand and fifteen, the Sheri Golf Advisory Board on January the twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, and February the twenty-third of two thousand and sixteen, the Mission Economic Development Authority, Inc., special and regular meeting on February the ninth of two thousand and sixteen, Spur Memorial Library Board on February the sixteenth of two thousand and sixteen, the Mission Historical Museum on February the sixteenth, Planning and Zoning Commission on February the twenty-fourth, Mission Boys and Girls Club, January the fourteenth of two thousand and sixteen, and February the eleventh of two thousand and sixteen. All those need to be acknowledged and we do need a motion to acknowledge those minutes.
I move to approve that knowledge recipient minutes.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We do have, item four point one is the renewal of lease agreement with Ramona G. González on lots nineteen and twenty, Lot one seventy-three at the Mission Original Townsite.
Yes, Mayor and Council, good afternoon. This is related to the parking lot that's behind the city building, which is at one seventeen East Tom Landry. The original agreement on this lease was entered in April of two thousand and two. The agreement is up for renewal for this year and the agreement is for two thousand two hundred dollars a year.
Any questions from the council on the lease?
There is no increase, Mayor. It's the same amount from last.
Okay. We do need a motion to renew the lease.
Move to approve, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the renewal of the lease. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, Plata, the Joe vote?
Yes.
Okay. Three votes. Motion carries. Item four point two. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Item four point two, on March tenth, two thousand and sixteen, the City of Mission Ambulance Board met to review eight ambulance company permit applicants to conduct business in the City of Mission. Hidalgo County EMS, Medex Transport, RGV, Vitalis, Skyline, Elite Critical Care, Carousel, and Allegiant EMS. Were approved by the ambulance board as they have met all the required specifications for permit issuance pursuant to chapter thirty of the City of Mission Court of Ordinances. It was also recommended by the ambulance advisory board to no longer accept new applicants until January first, two thousand and seventeen. This item is now before you.
There are only nine ambulance companies?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Okay. Those are the only nine ambulance companies that should have permits to run in Mission. We do need a motion to approve the permit.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the recommendation and approve the ambulance providers permits. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Four point three, Mr. Vela or Ms. Vela? Ms. Vela?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item four point three is authorization to solicit for proposals for auditing service for the City of Mission. Staff is seeking for authorization to solicit proposals for auditing service for the City of Mission. The city council is required by the City of Mission, section three point one fourteen, to have an independent audit of the books of accounts, records, and transactions of all the administrative departments for the city at least yearly. This item is not before you.
We do need a motion to authorize the solicitor bids.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to authorize the soliciting of proposals for the auditing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Four point four, Vela.
Item four point four is the approval of the February two thousand and sixteen financial statements. Our adjusted beginning balance was thirty-one million thirteen thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. Our total revenues for the month were nine million eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars. Our total expenditures were nine million one hundred and forty-three dollars and one hundred and forty-three thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars, which brings our ending fund balance to thirty-one million seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-five. Our total assets were a hundred and fifty million two hundred and forty-eight thousand seven forty-six. Our total liabilities were fifty-eight million two hundred and sixteen thousand two hundred and twenty-one, and our total net assets were ninety-two million thirty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-four. This item is now before you.
We need a...
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and second to approve our financial statements. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item four point five.
Item four point five is our tax collections report for the month of February two thousand and sixteen. This is for the acceptance of the monthly property tax report for the month of February two thousand and sixteen. The two thousand and fifteen total logistic tax levy was nineteen million one hundred and thirty thousand three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. And the amount of collections as of February twenty-ninth, two thousand and sixteen, was seventeen million two hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-three cents, which represents ninety point zero five percent of the total tax levy. This item is now before you.
We need a motion to approve our collection report.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Four point six. Mr. Terrasso.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. I'll be presenting in behalf of Mr. Terrazas. This item, four point six, is the authorization to execute payment to Rio Valley Switching Company to replace a fifty-four foot railroad crossing at Los Ebanos Road. Authorization is being requested to execute payment to Rio Valley Switching Company to replace fifty-four foot of railroad crossing at Los Ebanos Road. Rio Valley Switching will do the construction for this project to include labor and materials. The estimated cost for this project is thirty-nine thousand eighty-five dollars with eighteen cents. Against, staff recommendation is approval of payment to Rio Valley Switching for this project.
We do need a motion to authorize to execute the payment.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and second to execute payment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Four point seven.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I continue with item four point seven, approval to purchase SCBA bottles for the fire department. The Mission Fire Department is seeking approval to purchase thirty-nine Scott self-contained bleeding apparatus, SCBA, bottles without valves. This purchase is to replace thirty-nine SCBA bottles that met federal Department of Competition end-of-life requirements and need to be removed from service. This is a first purchase, request of total of seventy-four bottles requiring replacement. The retagability by board contract number four-three-two-dash-thirteen is the vendor.
I move for approval, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the purchase. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Four point eight, Ms. Longoria.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. Item four point eight is authorization to solicit bid for Housing Assistance Program Phase Fifteen Two. The Citizens Advisory Committee made on January twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, and approved staff's recommendation to provide reconstruction assistance for eight homes through the CDPG program to the following addresses. Twenty-three twelve, which is a hardship case due to a loss, due to a loss of a fire, which occurred on July nineteenth of two thousand and fourteen, is twenty-three twelve, Tuesday, two-bedroom. Two-twenty-one Sable, two-bedroom. Sixteen-seventeen Magnum Street, three-bedroom, two-bath. Nine-twenty-three Beta Street, two-bedroom. Two-fourteen South Holland, two-bedroom. One-twenty-six South Nicholson Avenue, two-bedroom. Two-oh-seven East Victory Street, two-bedroom. Twenty-one-twenty-four Pleasant Lane, two-bedroom. Staff's recommendation is to solicit bids for Housing Assistance Program, so is city manager.
You advertised it for...
Eight homes.
Eight homes.
Yes.
Here, I have a quick question. Just, what determines that, because I see the one and a half bath?
The two-bedroom, all of the two-bedroom homes are one and a half bath. They are equipped for...
Is that a standard?
Standard. And then the three-bedroom are two-bath.
Okay. So, that's not something we can adjust?
No, that's the way our floor plan is set up already.
So, is that something that the City of Mission does or is that something that comes...
City of Mission has approved that one.
It's our own...
It's our own rule?
Yeah, that's our own. Is there something that you want to...
You want to put two-bath?
I would rather see a two-bath. I mean, it's more efficient and it's not going to be...
Much better.
I don't see that it's cost of...
It won't cost that much anyway.
No.
I can certainly look at it and present it at a later date for you all so we can change the guidelines, we can revise the guidelines in that sense.
But you want it on these new homes, on these eight homes?
Yeah, the only thing is that the guidelines are already set up that way. Do you want me to, do you want to go ahead and maybe make a motion, maybe?
But, yeah, but have you...
Gone out for bids?
Have you gone out for bids?
No, that's what we're getting approval for, to go out for bids.
But you haven't gone out for bids.
No.
And then you can make the change.
Right. We have time, Mayor. What we can do is go back to staff, first of all, and create the plans, go back to the committee, get them approved, and then come back to the council for the authorization of the solicitation for the bids.
We can do it today. It's like noises. We can do it, approve the complete two-bedrooms. I mean, two-baths on houses, not one and a half.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, the only concern is that the applicants, when they applied, they applied under the existing guidelines.
But it didn't cost them anything. We're paying for everything ourselves.
And right now, since we haven't gone out for bids, I think we should be okay, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I'd ask is that it'd be subject to my review as far as the guidelines and what procedures need to be taken.
And also, the staff's cost estimate includes half a bath. I mean, one and a half bath. So, I don't know if that's going to affect the cost estimate.
It will, but it shouldn't be that much.
But you haven't gotten any proposals yet.
No.
You're talking about the guidelines that we have set for the dollar amount set for certain square feet.
Which is fifteen percent of staff's cost estimate.
Okay. I'll do whatever, if you want to recommend that.
The motion would have to do to authorize the solicitor bids for the housing program and also to approve the two bathrooms for the houses instead of the one and a half. That should cover our part, giving you authorization to do, instead of one and a half, should be two.
That would be my motion, Mayor.
And then, and then, and then if you want another meeting, we're going to have, we'll do it right away. But I don't think we need another meeting. So, we have a motion.
A second.
And a second to what I just said a few minutes ago on the motion. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. So, just get on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, four point nine, Mr. Benson.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item four point nine is staff seeking approval for securing contractual services for the creation, the oversight, and the filing of a ten-year parks master plan through the Texas Parks and Recreation Department. Staff recommendation is to approve the contractual services for Sally Gavlick, DBA, PR, and S, LSC, Parks Recreation and Sports Limited.
We need a motion to approve the authorization for a ten-year park master plan?
So moved, Mayor. Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Mayor, I have Ms. Gavlick here. If you'd like to meet her or have any questions for her, like if I afford.
She's the lady that's going to be doing the master plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
Yes, sir. Mayor and Council, is there anything that I can tell you about myself or about the master plan?
No, that's fine. We'll keep an eye on you for the next few days.
You will, okay. We're going to have it done for you by August so we can apply for grants in October.
Okay, good.
Thank you so much. I'm happy to mention that because that is the purpose of the contract. We want to make sure that there's some grants that are out there, both state and federal grants, that we want to be able to apply for one of the requirements. that we want to be able to apply for. One of the requirements is this ten-year plan.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Four point nine, Mr. Benson?
Yes, sir.
No, four point ten.
Four point ten. Staff is seeking authorization to purchase and have a partial installation of interactive playground equipment for a five-to-twelve-year-old age group for Anuful Tatón Rodriguez Park. This equipment would come from Park Place Recreation Designs, Inc., via State Board, approved by vendor, contract number four-two-three-dash-one-three. Staff's recommendation is approval of the purchase and installation of playground equipment for Anuful Tatón Rodriguez Park.
When would this be installed if this approval?
Well, that's a good question. I think it's going to take them about sixty days to get the project, to get the materials down here. But the Parks Department will make their first initial stage for the construction of the site. We'll do the digging. Once we get the site prepared, they'll be able to have our parts ordered and be down here to make the next installation. Once they install the playground equipment, at that time, the Parks Department will come back in and backfill with the safe play material.
Okay, we do need a motion to authorize the purchase of the playground.
Want to approve?
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We do need to start thinking about a bathroom or there's some time.
We are looking at a design right now. Thank you, Mayor.
Four eleven?
Okay. Item four eleven. Staff is seeking approval for the purchase of three riding lawnmowers. There'll be two seventy-two-inch Scag Cheetas with thirty-one horsepower engines, and one of the mowers will be equipped with a striping attachment. Also, for the purchase of forty-eight-inch Scag Cheetah, twenty-five horsepower mower. These mowers will be used for the mowing of parks, fields, city facilities. This purchase is via State Board-approved by board contract number four-four-seven-dash-one-four with MAE out of Mission.
We do need a motion to...
Want to approve?
Purchase.
Second.
A motion and second to purchase, allowed to purchase the mower. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Salinas, four twelve?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members. Again, item four point twelve is the authorization to award bid for the construction of the water treatment plant main laboratory building. On February eighth, two thousand and sixteen, City Council authorized staff to solicit bids for the water treatment plant main laboratory construction. The City of Mission has accepted open seven B responses for this project. Staff recommend awarding bid to G and G Contractor, who is the lowest responsible bidder meeting all specification. Main lab building will be constructed at the North Water Treatment Plant property and will be used to conduct daily necessary lab analysis for both North and South Water Treatment Plants. Against staff recommendation is authorization to award bid to G and G Contractors for this project.
We do need a motion to approve the, to award this for the construction of a water treatment plant, main laboratory building?
Second.
A motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. What's your estimate on the cost?
It's two-hundred-and-six-thousand, seven-hundred-and-one dollars.
That's your estimate?
That's the, that's the actual bid amount, the lowest bid amount that we received from G and G Contract.
Two-hundred-and-six?
Two-hundred-and-six-thousand, seven-hundred-and-one dollars.
Okay. Let's go on to the other one, four thirteen?
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council members. Item four point thirteen is the approval to purchase Equijet aerator for industrial pre-treatment plant from a sole-source vendor. Staff seeking a recommendation or authorization to purchase of one model A forty dash CFG Equijet aerator from Aerator Solutions, a sole-source vendor. Aerator will be used by the industrial pre-treatment plant to replace a non-functional aerator installed back in two thousand and five, and a purchase from the same vendor. Attached, we have a sole-source letter from vendor and Aerator Solutions and description of equipment. The total estimated amount or cost for this equipment is seventy-thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars. Staff recommendation is authorization to purchase Aerator from a sole-source vendor.
We do need a motion to approve the sole-source vendor?
Want to approve?
To the approval of the purchase?
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve, to purchase the, on the sole-source vendor?
Yes, sir. Equipment from a sole-source vendor, which is Aerator Solutions.
Okay, Aerator Solutions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against, motion carries. Four fourteen?
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council members. Item four point fourteen is the authorization to solicit bids for the Benson Palm Lift Station construction. Lift Station construction will increase center sewer service area for future development in the Benson Development and vicinity areas. Construction estimate is approximately eight-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand with thirty-five dollars. Against staff recommendation is the authorization to solicit for bids for this project.
We do need a motion to authorize to solicit for bids?
So moved. Second.
A motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item four fifteen?
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council members. Item four point fifteen is the authorization to execute second one-year renewal option for sludge management services for the Public Works Department. On April two thousand and fourteen, the City of Mission entered into contract with Terra Renewal West LLC, now Dinali Water Solutions LLC, for sludge management services for the wastewater treatment plant, pre-treatment plant, water, North and South Water Treatment Plants. The contract terms were for one year with two one-year renewal options based on three percent increase in price. Staff seeking authorization to extend contract for the second one-year renewal option at three percent increase in price with Dinali Water Solutions LLC. This agreement will extend bid number fourteen dash one-eighty-one dash zero-three dash thirteen from April two thousand and sixteen through April two thousand and seventeen. Of course, we have attached a letter from Dinali Water Solutions agreeing to the terms and conditions. Against staff recommendation is authorization to extend contract for the second one-year renewal option with Dinali Water Solutions LLC.
We do need a motion to execute?
So moved, Mayor. Second.
We have a motion and second to authorize to execute second one-year renewal option for the sludge management service.
At zero, at zero percent increase.
Yes.
Zero percent interest. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Four sixteen?
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council members. Item four point sixteen is the authorization to purchase equipment via state-approved contract for the Public Works Department. Staff seeking authorization to purchase via state-approved cooperative contracts for capital outlet equipment for streets, traffic signal department. Itemized bucket utility truck equipment is listed on the attachments with the actual cost and respective contract number. The total cost of this equipment, which is the bucket utility truck, is for one-hundred-and-two-thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars with twenty-one cents. Against staff recommendation is authorization to purchase bucket utility truck via state-approved by board contract, four ninety-one dash fifteen, with utility truck equipment company.
We do need a motion to authorize the equipment?
Want to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Four seventeen?
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council members. This next agenda item, four point seventeen, is the authorization to solicit bids for lift station rehabilitation at Sherry Road and Drill Run the Drive. Lift Station Rehabilitation will consist of demolition of existing deteriorated concrete wet well with a concrete base and will be replaced with a fiberglass wet well and concrete base. Approximately cost of this rehabilitation construction is of two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars. Against staff recommendation is authorization to solicit for bids.
We do need a motion to authorize to solicit bids for the lift station?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. I only heard one vote, so. Alô vamos. Four eighteen?
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council members. Item four point eighteen is the approval of work authorization number four with Javier Nogosa Engineering related to the City of Mission and Street Overlay Improvement Project. Work Authorization Number Four entails plan specifications and estimates for a street improvement project throughout the City of Mission. Improvement project includes asphalt pavement overlay, utility adjustments, and replacement of damaged concrete covering girders. Against staff recommendation is approval of work authorization number four with Javier Nogosa Engineering.
I move for approval. Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve the work authorization number four with Javier Nogosa Engineering related to the City of Mission Streets and Overlay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. The God's budget?
[laughing]
You know? Four nineteen?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item four point nineteen is the authorization to solicit bids for basic voluntary life ADD, ADND, and LTD. In two thousand and fourteen, the City of Mission entered into contractual agreement with Dearborn National for Basic Life, Accidental Death and Dismemberment, Long-Term Disability, and Voluntary Life Insurance. The contract terms were for one year with two one-year renewal options with no increase in rates. Staff is seeking authorization to solicit bids and authorize the city's agent, GEF Financial Group, to conduct solicitation for basic and voluntary life, ADND, and long-term disability. Staff's recommendation is to authorize GEF Financial Services to solicit bids for the life, ADND, and LTD.
We do need a motion to authorize to solicit bids?
Want to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Chief Dominguez?
Mayor, City Council, the Mission Police Department is requesting approval of a resolution to submit an agreement for the temporary closure of State Rightofway to the Texas Department of Transportation for the O'Blade Trail Bike Ride. The agreement is required by the Texas Department of Transportation for the closure of the westbound lane of FM ten-sixteen from Taylor Road to FM four ninety-four ending at La Lomita Chapel. The Mission Police Department will be responsible for securing the route, requesting authorization to submit to the Texas Department of Transportation.
We do need a motion to approve Resolution fourteen forty?
Want to approve?
Second.
A motion and second to approve Resolution fourteen forty and authorize the Mission Police Department to submit an agreement for the temporary closure of the rightofway. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Next item, Mayor. The Mission Police Department is requesting approval of a resolution for, to submit an agreement for the temporary closure of State Rightofway to the Texas Department of Transportation for the Juan Diego Academy Spring Festival five-k run and twenty-five-mile bike trail run. The agreement is required by the Texas Department of Transportation for the closure of the eastbound lane of FM ten-sixteen from FM four ninety-four to Sherry Road, turning southbound on Sherry Road and ending back at the Juan Diego Academy Catholic Regional High School. In addition, the twenty-five-mile bike ride will consist of a bike ride on FM four ninety-four and FM ten-sixteen. Again, will be responsible for securing the route for these two events.
I move for approval.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve or authorize the Mission Police Department to submit an agreement for the temporary closure of State Rightofway of, rightofway of this Texas Department of Transportation from San Juan Diego Academy, Spring Festival, five-mile k-run, and also to approve Resolution fourteen forty-one. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have anything to say, Chief?
No, Mayor, no comments.
I don't have any comments either. But we do have to go into executive session, and we do need a motion to approve Code Section five-five-one dash zero-zero-one.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
A motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Okay. Need a motion to reconvene?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and second to reconvene. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We'll go to item seven point one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item seven point one A, if the council wishes to take action on this item, we would need a motion to authorize the city manager, city attorney, or outside-designated council the use of eminent domain on behalf of the state of Texas to acquire a point zero-one-one of an acre parcel of land situated in Hidalgo County, Texas, and also being a part or portion of Lot Seven, Alex Cavasso subdivision, according to the plat or map thereof, recorded in Volume twenty-two, page one ninety-five of the map records of Hidalgo County, for the public purpose of construction or improvement of Inspiration Road, and to resolve or acquire any necessary rightaways related to this project.
I move to approve?
Second.
One second.
Second.
We lost half of our commission.
[laughing]
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Item seven point one B, Mr. Mayor. If the council wishes to take action, we would need a motion to authorize the city manager, city attorney, or outside-designated council the use of eminent domain on behalf of the state of Texas to acquire a point zero-one-five of an acre parcel of land situated in Hidalgo County, Texas, and also being a part or portion of Lot Eight, Alex Cavasso subdivision, according to the plat or map thereof, recorded in Volume twenty-two, page one ninety-five of the map records of Hidalgo County. This would be for the public purpose of construction or improvement of Inspiration Road, and to resolve or acquire any necessary rightaways related to this project.
Want to approve?
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. One vote voted. We need three.
Item...
Aye.
We need three.
Aye.
Didn't they only vote one?
No, we all voted.
One vote?
I voted.
Then now, so two. Let another one?
I say aye.
No, I don't know. Every time you don't vote, I'm going to say, I'm going to tell the public. Okay. Item C?
Item seven point one C, Mr. Mayor. If the council wishes to take action, we would need a motion to authorize the city manager to commence negotiations with the owner of the property described as Mission Original Townsite, Lot One, Block Ninety-One, Mission, Hidalgo County, Texas, regarding the acquisition of said property, subject to the parameters set in executive session, and if any said acquisition be taken, it would be for the public purpose of economic development.
I move to approve.
Second.
A motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Good. Motion passes. Item seven point two?
Item seven point two A, Mr. Mayor. If the council wishes to take action, we would need a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the employment agreement of city manager within the parameters discussed in executive session.
I move to approve.
Second.
Aren't you going to...
As discussed.
Tell the amount?
We, yes, Mr. Mayor. If you'd like, we can discuss the...
That's the amount?
The terms.
Not the, just what we discussed?
Yes. Per discussion, Mr. Mayor, the council is moving to approve a six-year term with a two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand annual salary for the city manager.
Okay, we need a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Seven point three?
That's not seven point three.
That's not the one?
No, sir.
That's it?
We're done?
That's adjourned?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.